Good morning. I will now call to order the March 24, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Stephen Maticor, County Council. Shannon Bays, Clerk to the Board. Roll call. Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting both personally, excuse me, in person and virtually. Little play on words there, right? General public comment will be taken at the usual time on the agenda. The public is welcome to sign up to testify. Please use the blue cards and put them in the basket right over there at the small table that is now provided at your left, just inside of the front door. Staff will pick them up during the meeting and bring them to the dais. Registration for public comment via Zoom is available online. We will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Also, for your information, we do have a public testimony brochure set aside since we haven't had public in-person meetings for a couple of months. This is a little reminder. If you're afraid about talking in public, don't worry about it. This guide will help you through that, and I do believe it's online as well, right, Gary?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board. Gary?
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, joining us online is Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Is she online, Shannon?
She is not.
All right. She has not joined yet. If she does, we'll add her to the room. We have two public hearings today, Commissioners, both for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. First is Adoption of a Resolution Number 1962, approving the Housing Authority of Clackamas County's annual plan for fiscal year 2022, and the authorization of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County to submit the plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in compliance with HUD regulations. Tony Carter is interim Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Rod Cook is the Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time today. This public hearing gives the Board and the public the opportunity to ask questions about our annual and five-year plans, and this is an opportunity that you get before you approve the final plan. The purpose of the plan is to provide accountability and transparency of the Housing Authority operations to the community, our residents, the Board, and HUD. We mention in the plan any change that would require any negative impact on our tenants, and we are required to mention any change that would cost the agency anything in excess of $250,000. The plan should also highlight our accomplishments in the past year, and that is my favorite part. The Housing Authority has a resident advisory board consisting of approximately 30 public housing and housing choice voucher residents. This resident advisory board met on January 11th to go over every component of the plan and to allow comments and questions. Those notes are attachment J to our plan, and you can read them in there. All of our residents were notified in our resident newsletter of this hearing today, and if they wanted to attend and make comment, they could come. This hearing was also noticed to the entire county in the Oregonian on January 2nd. This notice included a 45-day public comment period where they could make comments to the Housing Authority directly about our plans. To date, we have had no comments. On March 8th, the Board was formally presented at issues the annual plan and the five-year plan to review. The highlights of the plan include the Housing Authority is reducing barriers to housing by removing a $50 minimum rent requirement that is an impediment to families who are coming out of homelessness with zero income. The Housing Authority provides a very detailed development narrative that includes a clear direction of how we're going to develop Hillside Park. The plan also gives opportunities for future repositioning of all public housing. We followed the strategy suggested by our consultants and presented to the Board on March 9th as a general concept to research. The Housing Authority also mentions other non-federal fund resources that will be operated by our agency. One is the Metro Bond Fund, which allows us to collaborate with developers to increase affordable housing in the county. This collaboration has been highly successful and has brought 462 new units of affordable housing that is under construction right now in Clackamas County. That is Good Shepherd Village in Happy Valley, 143 units; Fuller Road Station in Happy Valley, 100 units; Maple Apartments in Oregon City, 171 units; and Tuailla Springs in Oak Grove, 48 units of permanent supportive housing. Also in the plan is the mention of the new supportive housing services program, including the operation of our regional long-term rent assistance program. Since November 1, we have already housed 69 homeless families and completed intakes for another 55 homeless families. I wish to note, we are well on pace with other counties with our leasing, even though we are not yet fully staffed to capacity with our service providers. The plans also report on progress toward meeting our goals we set in the last five-year plan. The Housing Authority was very successful in gaining new awards to combat homelessness in our county. The Housing Authority was the first housing authority in the nation to fully lease up all 41 of our allotted new emergency housing vouchers. The Housing Authority was the first housing authority in Oregon to apply for and get new foster youth to independence vouchers, and we were the first in the nation to fully utilize our first award of 25 vouchers. We have successfully been acknowledged and awarded additional 75 vouchers to serve youth exiting foster care due to our success. The Housing Authority entered into a unique partnership with Health Share of Oregon that granted us a one-year of rental assistance that aided 108 homeless and disabled families for a year with rental assistance. We were awarded 20 new mainstream vouchers that serve non-elderly and disabled clients, and we were awarded 25 new veteran homeless housing vouchers. Additionally, on top of our highlights, the Housing Authority just received an award to hire an additional family self-sufficiency coordinator. We exceeded our expectations by increasing enrollment and opening the program to both public housing and the housing choice voucher participants. The mission of this program is to graduate families off of assistance and even lead families to purchasing their own homes. We hope to double the number served and focus on homeownership opportunities to align with our development strategy in the future. We also reported updates on completed projects, such as the rehabilitation of Hillside Manor and the leasing up of the veteran housing project Clayton Moore Commons. In conclusion, the Housing Authority requests that either the Board approve and the Chair sign the resolutions approving the plan, or if there are any questions or concerns, that we put it on for Consent Agenda next week. I know there's a lot to read and absorb in the plans, and I'm here to serve the Board and respond to any questions or concerns presented in our plans at this time.
Thank you for that presentation, Tony. I would like to welcome Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Rod, do you have anything you need to add to Tony's presentation today?
No, I don't.
Thank you. We will now open it up to Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Tony and Rod. Could you give me a status report? You didn't mention the Webster Road Project in Gladstone, or did you?
That's what we call Tuailla Springs now.
Okay, okay. So that was 40?
Forty-eight units of permanent supportive housing.
Okay, and that was for senior citizens, I believe, was it not?
It's for elderly, well, it's near elderly, 55 and older.
Okay, great. And so when do we expect completion on that project?
That'll be at the end of this year.
Great.
We'll be leasing probably in May or June.
Okay, great. Love to have, well, it's in the report, but is there any other changes aside from the program that we ought to know about that are unique from last year, other than what you mentioned?
No, this year has been a pretty quiet year, that we're kind of going status quo since we're in the middle of looking for a new director.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Oh, thank you, Chair Smith. I was getting ready to turn off my light, and you did that for me.
And Commissioners, just for further reference, it's easier for me to turn off your light because it tells me you've already spoken, and I can't, won't forgive anybody.
Okay.
It's just a way I keep track. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Thank you for being here. Couple of questions. I was looking through, and maybe I missed it. Just curious, how we're planning with, we had the heat dome last year. Climate change is an issue, and needing air conditioning and cooling for places with the need, with our climate changing, how are we addressing that in future, current and future housing? For, through hack.
Go ahead.
Currently, our resident services team is working with the Medicaid program to be able to purchase air conditioning units for clients who are disabled, elderly, that would need those. And in our development strategy going forward, that will definitely be something we're looking into for all new developments, to do air conditionings.
So even the ones that are underway right now?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that is really good news. Thank you.
I'm not promising every unit's going to have air conditioning. Let me make that clear. It'll be dependent on us finding the funding sources.
Okay, so, because when we approved them, gosh, how long ago was that? That was quite a while ago. We didn't have the heat dome, so that wasn't on our mind that that was something that was very, very important.
Right.
So it wasn't part of the performance that we had reviewed. But there's definitely a concerted effort to do that.
There definitely is, and HUD also has been making it a concerted effort. They very much acknowledge the change in temperatures.
Well, if you need help from your county commissioners in talking with our congressional leaders, or foundations, or nonprofits, please utilize us, because I'm pretty sure this whole commission would be interested in making sure that that happens.
Great, thank you.
I can speak for the commissioner of these issues, right?
I think so. Go ahead.
Another question that I had, I really appreciate, I love the way that this report is laid out, and even though it's, there's a lot of information in it, it's very easy to follow as to what the issues and plans are. But I was just curious, one of HUD's, HUD's process has four nationwide housing goals, and one of them is to reduce segregation and build on the nation's increasing racial, geographic, and economic diversity. And I bring that up wondering how we are consciously looking towards that goal, because the history of public housing has been segregated. It has been, we're going to put all the people that have low incomes over in this concentrated area, and we know from history that that doesn't work, because when there's higher density of certain, certain housing, that it just doesn't create good societal outcomes. So I know that our three of our developments are within areas that allow for a lot of integration, or there are ones like in Happy Valley, the others in Oregon City, and we have, and so the areas are great because they're placed in places. But within them, the only development that is having mixed income, or income above 60% of AMI, or 80%, now I can't remember, but you can tell me, is the Fuller Station. So how are we moving forward in making sure that our, we're using, utilizing our public federal dollars to maximize economic diversity?
So when we're getting our development plans, we do an RFQ for how we want to develop those properties. So, for example, at Hillside Park, we're currently doing an RFQ for those plans. In those plans, we do ask for them to be mixed-use or mixed-income property models. So they could be 30, 60, 80, and above. So we are looking at those plans to see if we can do those. And then we have to, when we're using public housing properties, all of our plans have to be approved by HUD, and they have to do what's called a subsidy layer review to make sure they work. And more, more often than not, to do that subsidy layer review and to get it to work, you do have to have higher income brackets being served in those developments, because you have to get those higher rents.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that answer, because I know at the federal level, with the low-income tax credits, there was a concerted effort to ease up the restrictions to allow more mixed income and more partnership, and it's great, so thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, you guys. Nice to see you here today. Hey, can you elaborate for me a little bit more on how we're working towards homeownership? It looks like a lot of our inventory right now is rental properties, and imagining public housing includes homeownership, is that correct?
So right now, the Housing Authority does not run a homeownership program.
Okay.
What we do work with is community development, who does own and operate a homeownership-type program. We also work with a, was it the Indian? I'm forgetting the name. But we are looking at, when we sell the scattered sites, that's why we were so excited to get the new FSS coordinator funding. We are hoping to build the equity escrow balances of all of our public housing tenants, so they have the first option to purchase those scattered sites, and own them, and go off assistance. So that is kind of our goal overall. But we are working with other agencies on homeownership. I'm sorry, I don't remember the names of them. And Devon Ellen is working with them, our Development Director, and she is the one working with them to find strategies to get our folks to be able to buy those homes first.
Okay. And the reason I asked that, and I just noticed the other day in the news that, oh, gosh, the huge development folks, Habitat for Humanity, has gotten quite a bit of money from a donor. I think the woman who is married to a very wealthy individual, and I was wondering how we were hooking into those dollars as a county, working with groups like Habitat for Humanity and Proud Ground. Because one of the things that we're finding, when you want to encourage economic mobility and prosperity, is that actually owning a home really starts to move you upwards out of, you know, gives you your assets, gives you some capacity, gives you really an opportunity to move up the mobility ladder, and that's something we've been working on at the national level. And I would like to see us, again, if we could, in the future, again, work, let's really start focusing not just on units, which we are necessary, because we need the inventory, but let's start working with some of those groups that actually enable people to purchase, buy a home, however that happens, because I think it's a big piece that we're exploring at the national level, in economic mobility. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Savis, you're up again.
Yeah, I just want to just add, on the discussion around economic diversity, that it's, it's not just what's in the building as far as the mixture of income levels, but it's also, you know, out the door in any area that you're in. So there's been analysis, people's success rate of transitioning from, you know, a low, lower income issue, or out of and into, and transitioning into success, especially with younger generations, you know, really based on the ZIP code. You know, a lot of ZIP code analysis, which leads to, you know, living the American dream and people's ability to transition and transcend into that upper level. So Wilsonville, for example, has placed a lot of their income housing, Charbonneau, for example. Is it Charbonneau? Not Charbonneau, but it's Villebois. The Villebois, they got a mixture, so they've got placed, placed lower-income facilities and others within there. So they're saying, getting that mixture, and not just in one area, but making sure that you're not concentrating in census tracts where it's really low income, because the success rate out of that is much lower. So again, my point there is that it's not just what's in the building, but what's around in the area, in the area you're living in, as well as the services and quality food and all those kinds of things. So just want to add that. So I'll have Chair, thank you.
Madam Chair, for my response.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say to that, the equity issue, this is one where, one, because of the Board's leadership on equity overall, we're able to pursue this type of conversation and really look at it. And I'm a product of what you just mentioned. When I was on this, in the system, and I was put in mixed housing, and I was able to see people who were making it, and what they were doing to make it, and have my kids play with those kids who were making it, it made all the difference in my desire to move up, and it actually even taught me the way out. And so we, you have leadership in this county who is 100% behind what you, what you're mentioning in terms of our policy directive on that. So we're 110% in on that. We believe in it, and that's what we like to create for our community.
Right, that's very well said. I agree with that thoroughly. You know, even in, where I grew up in South County, when I was in the third grade, I attended this little two-room schoolhouse in the country. It was a mile from my home. And then we, the school district decided to consolidate all those little schoolhouses, and we went to the big city of Malala for my education. And therefore, I was integrated with all the city kids from Malala, and I was the country, okay? And let me tell you, that was just an eye-opener. And you laugh about that, but even we have subsets within the county that you would not think of, and that's, and those still exist out there, by the way. They still exist. And so you can imagine, the transition I went through as a third grader, going from my nice little knit home, you know, my nice little two-room schoolhouse with my comfortable teachers and friends, and I was just thrown in. At the time, Malala Elementary School was the largest elementary school in the state of Oregon. That is how big it was. So when you say that, it really rings home to me. I also love the idea that we're taking these scattered home sites and making them available for people to buy. And I've always said, you know, supplying homes for people does, affordability quotient does include the opportunity for people to buy a home, and whatever we can do to get them up, and you know, it's just not, it's just not the adults that buy in the home, like you say, Rod, it's their children. They say, yeah, this is my home. Children have an investment, and they have feelings in their home, and that's really important. Okay, do we have any, anybody online to testify? No, I need to open up the hearing.
Chair.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Thank you very much. I got ahead of myself. I will now open the public hearing for public testimony. Well, I will take in-person first. I don't think we have any, do we? Shannon? Okay.
We have no cards for the hearing.
And I do not have any blue cards. We don't have anybody online for that. It's the end of my list. I will now close the public hearing on this matter, and will welcome any questions or comments from my fellow Commissioners. It appears that we have concluded the comments. May I have a motion, Commissioners?
Anne, you're on mute, Anne.
Thank you, sir. I move we adopt Resolution Number 1962 and Number 1963.
Anne Leenstra has made the motion that we adopt Resolution Number 1962, approving the annual plan for fiscal year 2022 of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, and authorizing the Housing Authority of Clackamas County to submit the plan to housing and urban development. Thank you very much, Anne. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Savis has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. You have one more public hearing. Don't go away. So in the next public hearing, also Housing Authority of Clackamas County, Adoption of a Resolution Number 1963, approving the Housing Authority of Clackamas County's five-year plan for fiscal year 2022 to 2027, and the authorization of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County to submit the plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in compliance with HUD regulations. Tony and Rod, go ahead.
Well, I thought I was covering both in one fell swoop, so I don't have anything new to say.
Any questions for the presenters on this from Commissioners? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing for public testimony. Do we have anybody in the audience for this? Grover, would you like to come forward and testify on this? Would you please come forward, sir? State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld, and I live in Jennings Lodge. I was just inspired by what was just talked about then, and I wanted to speak to that. I ran a HUD-funded program in a very challenged area of Portland, and then another one in San Jose. And what he just spoke of, that ability to be mixed with folks of all levels of ability and work on things together, and have things that you care about together, makes a phenomenal difference. We had a 92% success rate keeping very challenged teenagers engaged in school, raising their grades, out of gangs, now, not perfect, but trending in that direction on a regular basis. So I can't speak more to support the value of not segregating or looking at solving it just that way. It's bringing people together who can work together, and no matter where you fit on the spectrum, you can work with other people, and you learn a lot, no matter, the mentors from our program continually talked about, they felt guilty, they learned so much, they got so much out of the program, and yet the kids are the ones we measured their results. Anyway, thanks, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for coming forward on that. Any other testimony? Anybody online, Anne?
I do not have anyone registered online. If anyone would like to speak on this issue at this time, please raise your hand, and we will call on you in the order that you're received. Seeing no hands, that is the end of my list.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing on this matter, and will welcome any additional questions or comments from Commissioners. Anne Leenstra, would, oh, Mark?
I'd just like to thank the Housing Authority for all the work on this plan. I'm sure HUD's going to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion from Commissioner Leenstra.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 1963.
Commissioner Leenstra has moved for adoption of Resolution 1963, approving the five-year plan for fiscal year 2022 to 2027 for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, and authorizing the Housing Authority of Clackamas County to submit the plan to housing and urban development. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. The motion has passed 6-0. Thank you, Commissioner Leenstra, for showing up and voting.
Thank you.
I will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's up next?
Next, Chair Smith, is the Consent Agenda. Shannon, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
First up is Health, Housing, and Human Services. Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Amendment Number One with Todos Juntos to expand PreventNet Community School Drug and Alcohol Prevention Services in rural Clackamas County to include Sandy and Estacada. Grant amendment is fully funded by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Amendment has a value of $91,078 for a maximum award of $281,078. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Subrecipient Agreement Amendment Number Three with Clackamas County Circuit Court to Increase Staff Time Per Protective Order and Support Services at the Family Justice Center. Grant amendment is fully funded by the U.S. Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women: Improving Criminal Justice Response Grant. Amendment Number Three has a value of $9,976 for a maximum award of $235,415. No county general funds are involved. No county general funds are involved. Approval of the non-federal subrecipient agreement with the Clackamas County Children's Commission for the Help Me Grow Program. The funds will pay for a cross-systems team. Funding is provided by Providence Health and Services Oregon Grant. Contract maximum value is $87,000. No county general funds are involved. Approval of intergovernmental agreement number 159475, amendment 04, with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services Aging and People with Disabilities Division for the provision of the Oregon Money Management Program in Clackamas County. This amendment adds $119,292.30, bringing the total value to $770,024.79, funded by the State of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Approval of amendment number one to an agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail, and Public Transit Division for 5339 Bus and Bus Facilities Funds for purchase of replacement vehicle funding for Mount Hood Express and Transportation Reaching People. Total contract value remains $304,300. Amendment extends contract through December 31, 2023, and adds no new revenue. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an amendment to the research subaward agreement with Oregon Health Services Science University, excuse me, for institutional review board study. Total value is up to $219,419, funded through Oregon Health Science University. No county general funds are involved. Approval of amendment number three to the subrecipient agreement with Northwest Family Services for homeless shelter services and rent assistance. Amendment adds $100,000 funded through Emergency Solutions Grant. No county general funds are involved. Approval of amendment number four to an intergovernmental grant agreement from State of Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services for landlord rent guarantee funds increases the pool of funding available statewide by $10,000 to a new value of $200,000. No county general funds are involved. Department of Transportation and Development, approval of intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and City Happy Valley related to the 172nd Avenue Improvement Project. The agreement allows design and construction of street widening and intersection improvements along southeast 172nd Avenue between southeast Misty Drive and southeast Maple Hill Lane. Overall estimated project cost is $53,278,800. City of Happy Valley will contribute $51,936,108. Transportation System Development charges, joint district funding, will contribute $1,142,900. The remaining $199,792 will be funded by cash acknowledgement funds. Approval of the five-year Transportation Capital Improvement Program fiscal years 2021 to 2026. Total cost estimate for all projects in the five-year Capital Improvement Program is $122.4 million. Funding will come from multiple sources, including state and federal grants, community road fund, development agency resources, and the road fund. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of River Grove to pave Dogwood Drive, Tullamere Avenue, and Marlin Avenue. Estimated project cost is $190,000. The city will reimburse the county up to $100,000. All costs in excess of $100,000 will be the responsibility of the county and funded through county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval to amend a grant agreement with Metro for Regional Travel Options Grant for Safe Routes to School Work and Program Coordinator Position for one additional year, and add $39,600 of additional grant funding provided by Metro. In-kind staff time will serve as the grant match. No road use and/or county general funds are involved. Approval of the IGA with State of Oregon acting by and through its Department of Consumer Business Services Building Codes Division adopting the Wildfire Grant Program, which will help wildfire survivors install fire hardening measures on their homes. The total expected distribution of Clackamas County is $162,000, funded by the State of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Approval to apply and letter of support for a federal land access program grant to provide pavement overlay on Barlow Trail Road. Project cost is $5,510,146, funded through Federal Highway Administration Federal Land Access Program Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Authorization to purchase one current model year ditch witch JT 10A bore machine with trailer and accessories from the Charles Machine Works using Sourcewell Contract Number 110421-CMW for Clackamas Broadband Exchange to use in support of deployment of new fiber-optic cable as part of the self-performed work on broadband expansion. Total cost is $158,561.32, funded through board-approved American Rescue Plan Act funds. No county general funds are involved. Elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Business and Community Services, approval of a resolution to apply for $150,000 in grant funding through Oregon Parks and Recreation Department's OPRD Local Government Grant Program for roadway improvement project at Fayer Park. Tourism, approval of a contract for search engine optimization and search engine marketing campaign management from Anvil Media, Inc. Total contract value is $227,550, funded through the transient room tax. No county general funds are involved. That is the end of my list.
Weehaw, we have quite the consent agenda. Thank you, Shannon, for that. Is there any commissioner who would like to remove an item off the consent agenda? Commissioners, Fisher?
Yeah, I do not want to remove an item. I just want to highlight an item, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
There, the very first consent agenda item is dealing with Prevent Net and it's providing funding to todos juntos. I just want to highlight that the county, Clackamas County, used to receive about a million dollars for these services from the state, and there was a system that went around the county much more robust. And the state, in its last procurement process, cut the funding to Clackamas County pretty extensively, which meant that a lot of those services went away. They're really important services, and I just want our providers to know and our staff to know that we, as a board, recognize and appreciate that, and we continue to advocate and work with our partners at the state level, our state legislators. I know that Commissioner Schrader and I worked extensively on this issue, and we have not forgotten about the importance of services within the schools to help at-risk youth, and especially during this time of COVID recovery.
Well said, Commissioner Fisher. I think it's important that the public knows that we are dependent on state funding to initiate the mandates they tell us to do. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I'm just curious as to, knowing that the state legislature is flush with cash, as is verbatim what the news reporters have stated, so when they're flush with cash and knowing the need, why would they cut services?
You know, it was through the procurement process, through the agency, the legislature allocated the money. They went through and they issued funding based on a grant approval process. And whereas Clackamas County in the past received the bulk of the resources, they now were distributed amount out amongst other entities, which is unfortunate in the sense that we had a whole system in Clackamas County.
Do you think that perhaps had anything to do with the fact that they realized there might be supportive housing services available, and this is a swaperoo?
No, I don't think so, because this is dealing with youth, families, social services in the schools, yeah.
Okay.
But I, our public affairs, government relations staff is really good, and I'm, this issue has not died, and I expect that we will continue the dialogue, especially after we get our Clackamas Caucus together, getting ready for the next session, I think we can highlight the importance of these issues.
Yeah, let's make sure that we remember to bring it up. Thank you for that. You bet. Any other commissioner comments on the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded it. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion's approved, five-zero. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board. Gary?
Next is the Water Environment Services Board Consent Agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of a contract with Murray Smith, Inc. for contract number 5222-RFP2019-55 for the Intertie Two Pump Station Expansion and Force Main Project. The purpose of the project is to expand pumping capacity to accommodate future peak flows. Contract value is $1,107,808, funded through West Capital Improvement Funds. No county general funds are involved. That is the end of my list.
Thank you, Shannon. Does any commissioner wish to remove an item off this particular consent agenda? Discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Commissioner Savis has moved to approve the consent agenda of Wes, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded it. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Well, we've gone through our agendas today already, and up next is public communication. We will start with the people in the audience. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the objective or consideration, and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body. Under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code, comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the public hearing. I have three blue cards of people in the room. First up, Anata Blackmar. Would you please come forward? State your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, and good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Anata Blackmar. I live in Oak Grove, near the Concorded project site. I am also on NCPRD's Advisory Committee. At the beginning of this process, you asked for the community to speak with one voice, and I'm pleased to tell you that we have a consensus on how to proceed with the project. All five community organizations involved in this project have agreed on a single recommendation. We are recommending that the library building be detached from the existing school building and proceed right away, independent of the timetable and funding for the other amenities. We've also agreed that the importance and the size of the park in this park-deficient area should not be minimized. We would like this park to be designed to work in concert with the library, delight us with its nature qualities, and not play second fiddle to the other amenities. The Library Board, the DAC, the Oak Grove Community Council, the Concorded Task Force, and the Jennings Lodge CPO have all voted for this recommendation with no dissenting votes. So there's excitement in the Oak Lodge community about having a new library in the very near future. It will initiate the Concorded site as our central gathering place, and it's going to make a big difference in our area. Community members want to move ahead expeditiously, mindful of the need to complete a new library design as soon as possible. This library, park, and community center complex is going to serve the area for decades to come. We want to build on the careful design considerations and community aspirations that went into the previous plan, so that the new plan takes this project to its full potential as the heart of the community. We really want to move forward as quickly as possible, but without making hasty design decisions that miss some important design possibilities. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Anata, for coming forward. Gary, don't we have a meeting next Wednesday of the NCPRD District where this commission will be meeting jointly with that board?
No, you'll have a meeting of the NCPRD Board of Directors next Wednesday evening, not a joint meeting, but just the board.
That's what I meant to say.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. And there's many, there's a couple, three agenda items coming forward, so I recommend that, it's on Zoom.
Yes.
Recommend that all your folks listen to that. Thank you very much. Up next is Grover Bornfeld. Please come forward. State your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair Smith and Commissioners and staff. Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld, Jennings Lodge, 30 years. And I have enjoyed being active in our community, serving on CPO, library, library district, NCPRD, et cetera, boards and others. And what I'm here to talk about is, I really want to thank you and encourage your continued support of community involvement, because being on boards, any of that takes you empowering it to happen and letting, let them do what they do, and then come back and be able to feed that. So as a quick reminder, and I'm here specifically to talk about the focus on NCPRD, in 1990, the voters passed, we started NCPRD, they agreed to be funded, to fund it, and the advisory board would be made up, and back then it was boards. There were five boards plus a regional board, and the only one of those boards left is the one in Milwaukee. So we are working, and we had this conversation with you a year ago, and you approved a task force to go out and design how can the four subareas that are all unincorporated meet, find common ground, select their own representatives to be able to serve on the district advisory committee, and be able to have their needs and wants represented in that. So it went great. You did that, the task force, Anata, by the way, served on that same task force, came up with a plan. We, with the help of a lot of local volunteers, as well as PGA, were able to have two town hall meetings, and it was success, and we had eight, two from each of the four subareas chosen, and a whole raft of new people who are now involved in the process of participating, or, I lost everybody.
Go ahead.
Okay, good. To participate in the process of selecting their own representatives. Okay, so as you know, there are time limits, and some people had personal, so we now have four more to do, and it's a golden opportunity to work with NCPRD, to get out the brand-new GWIS digital review of what's been accomplished over the last year. The new budgets and plans are coming out, so to get this out to those community members who are frequently under-involved and underserved. I loved what got said about the housing. It went out, not a single comment. Now, do you think anybody cares? I think a lot of people care, but we need to work at generating involvement, and that's what I'm here to talk about, is just to keep doing that. So I could go on and on, but time being limited, I really want our support to do it. It's now. We need to have four candidate positions filled by the end of June, so we can start the new year. And we are already moving forward to do the same process, but I just want to keep you on track for that, and I'll keep reporting back on that. But the things that are unfolding is, is how do we generate out of the blue an opportunity to have people in the distant areas? So our task force and that process led to a formation of the Friends of Justice Property. And I want you to know, that property almost went away, but now there's a whole pocket of people out there who are engaged, they're supporting what's going on, they're interacting. That's just an example, but then there's also, Anata and a group of people started the Friends of River Villa, which made a huge difference. And then there's the, we're working on the Friends of the Future Jennings Lodge Park at Jennings Lodge School, and Anata's working on the Future Friends of New Urban Park at New Urban High School. These are all things that keep people engaged, and the things that are local to them. And I want to close on one comment.
Okay, thank you.
My one comment is, you heard me speak before, the ability to get people engaged and functioning on things, they get great value. They want to participate, and they support that, and that's what we're trying to do here.
Thank you, Grover. I appreciate your comments. You're not the only board who's struggling with to get members. During COVID, it was difficult. We are in post-COVID arena now, and we have about 40 boards and commissions that we have vacancies on in the county. So thank you for bringing that plea to serve forward, and hopefully it will not be on deaf ears.
Thank you, thank you. And we know we have a method that works, so we just want to replicate and crank it up.
Thank you very much for that, and I appreciate your service. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm going to save some of my comments for commissioner comments on this topic, but I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to the meeting next week. We really haven't had a meeting, a regular meeting, to talk about issues actually since 2019, when we really think about it. That's a long time. I do want to just capitalize on the other thing that was mentioned, that is, we put a lot of energy in the Concord project. We acquired a piece of land near Olive Street to make this project happen. We changed the zoning to allow for the operations. We spent millions of dollars in the public processes and the engineering that got us to where we are today. So we've made an investment, and that momentum hopefully will carry forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Up next, Kathy Schreiber. Please come forward, state your name. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you too have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Excuse me. Kathy Schreiber, 7491, Southeast La Paz Street, Milwaukee, Oregon. McFarland bark delivered compost to me that was contaminated with toxic waste, and the Oregon Department of Agriculture and Metro covered it up. Worse yet, they blamed me. My landscape melted, plants became twisted, deformed, and died. My granddaughter got sick, I got sick, my chickens died. I raised white peacedoves, and their babies died, and their eggs were no longer viable. The soil microbiome was destroyed. Where there was once life, now stood ruin. I called and left messages with every official I thought would care, yet nobody returned my call except the Oregon Department of Agriculture, and they proceeded to turn on me. Are our tax dollars really meant to defend the polluters? I don't know if any of you are gardeners, but imagine pruning your roses and seeing orange footprints in your lawn after leaving the beds. We are raised to believe in justice, then grow up to find out that the system is rigged, and worse yet, it's the best one on the planet. As a woman in the wrong zip code, I've suffered every injustice imaginable, from early domestic violence to almost dying from the wrong medication, to getting back on my feet only to have toxic waste dumped on me. COVID was the least of my worries. I have evidence to back up every statement I make here. Phone records, witnesses, written, recorded, photographic, and scientific instrumentation. I now stand alone with everything I've worked for my entire life, but that's not why I'm here. As every woman here in here knows, it's difficult to defend oneself. We're taught not to. But like a mama bear, I'm here in honor of my children and my grandchildren. I'm a certified soil lab technician, and I've been sampling soil all over the county. It's not good news. However, in my desperation to heal the soil, I found a solution. Not only to weeds and pests and diseases, but water infiltration and climate change and the nutritionally-dense food. Mother Nature's worked for eons to build a system that functions on our behalf. Some of the best water in the country is right under our feet in Redland. It's been tested. All plant problems reflect soil health. It's Mother Nature's way of telling us something is out of balance. We just need to listen. We must drop our biological weapons and declare peace. Did you know that 1% organic matter can sequester 10 tons of carbon per acre per year? How much land do you steward? An acre? A tenth of an acre? That's a ton. You could sequester a ton. How many acres does Clackamas County control? I implore you to take a meeting with me so I can share this with you, and you can become heroes. Clackamas County can become a model sample of what actually works. Some of the... My closing statement was, "You can ignore me, but I don't plan on going away, and neither is climate crisis or food insecurity." Please take a meeting with me.
Thank you, Kathy, for bringing this topic to this board's attention. I had not heard of this before. I don't think my Commissioners have either. What you've said today is just appalling. I think I can speak for all the board members on this. Gary, what would be a procedure for her to meet with somebody at the county and try to understand what's going on and for possible help? I don't know what to do with this.
If you leave your contact information, which should be on the blue card, and I'll have my staff reach out to you, and we'll get some staff together to meet with you and talk about what's possible.
Very good. One of your park's roots goes into my land, so that's going to take that park out.
And this is the land where McFarland bark, you said, delivered bark that had toxins in it. Okay, all right. Thank you very much for coming forward and making us aware. You know, we can't do anything unless we know what the problem... A problem exists and are aware of that. Thank you for attending the board meeting today.
Thank you for listening.
Okay, Shannon, is there anybody online?
I do have one registered participant online. If you were unable to register ahead of time and would like to testify, please select the raise hand feature, and I'll call on the registered participants first and then the raised hands in the order that they were received. First up is Thelma Hagan-Miller. Thelma, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Thelma Hagan-Miller. I reside in the unincorporated area of Oak Grove. I sent you a triangle a couple weeks ago showing a simple plan for the Concord Property Project and our attempt to get the Oak Grove and Jennings Lodge communities speaking with one voice. Since then, as Anata noted, five citizen groups have voted to have the Oak Lodge Library sited on the Concord Property but not attached to the Concord School. I left the area for a week at the Governor's Conference in Sun River, and when I returned, I discovered that not all members of these five groups are supporting the idea of moving forward with one voice on this plan. I know you've received some emails on this issue. So what can I say except that as you sit as the Board of Directors of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, April 6th, you listen very carefully to all input and allow time for this project to sort itself out. It is not there yet, and the general citizenry of the area has no idea of what is taking place. Anata said it very well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Thelma.
It's me. I want to confirm, the NCPRD board meeting is next Wednesday, March 30th. Thelma mentioned April 6th.
Oh.
Next, March 30th, Thelma.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
I will say, this board has been getting a lot of emails, and one email will conflict with the previous email, and it is ongoing. I don't believe today that this Board of BCC has had solid direction on how to move forward with this and making people happy. We'll listen. Like Commissioner Savas says, we have not had a meeting in a very long time. I think we need to take care of the normal course of business at this meeting. I will be chairing, and we will be observing all the same protocols in that meeting that we do here today. Public testimony will be at the end of the meeting, so we can ensure that all the business matters are taken care of. I don't know how many people are going to testify. I suspect it could be that we could have a robust attendance. So with that in mind, people, if anybody's listening, I could limit testimony from three minutes to one minute in order to try to give everybody who wants to testify an opportunity to speak. So that's how we're going to proceed with this. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I did want to mention that part of the, I will say, perceived confusion, and maybe there is a little bit of confusion indeed, and that is that the Concord Project is partially NCPRD and also the library aspect, which is really under the auspices of the Library Board. Really, so to speak, I'm going to say a subdivision of the county, but it's a library board that's got standing. Some of those funds are coming from the Library District. I have advocated for quite a long time that there be legal representation for each of those to help guide the interest of those in such a way that agreements would be in place between the Library District and the county and also NCPRD, because this library will be going on the land owned by NCPRD. So there needs to be some separation, and I'm hoping it doesn't get any more confusing than it already is. But I think we need to be mindful and open-minded that we're actually really close. And I think that the option that people had landed on a long time ago was the close thing. But part of the confusion really is, frankly, is that this is two different entities on one piece of property. So I'll leave it there.
And I had been asking for a very long time, is some solid budget numbers of money available? Design with a cost on it? And until that happens, I will not move it forward. I'm just telling y'all right now. That's the way it is. That's the way this board functions. That's the way I function. So until that happens, and be careful with what you wish for, because the payment of this may not be what you expect. Just saying. Okay, now, with that in mind, Gary, you're up.
All right, thank you, Chair. Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I first have a piece of business for you Commissioners that is urgent, so we'll bring it to you today. That is to select a Commissioner who will sit on the Association of Oregon County's Forest Trust Lands Subcommittee of the Association of Oregon County's Natural Resources Committee. There's a meeting next Thursday, March 31st, of which the county has to identify a Commissioner to participate on behalf of Clackamas County, and we need you to vote on it so we could send a letter today to AOC. So seeking your direction on which Commissioner will sit on the AOC Forest Trust Lands Subcommittee and the meeting on March 31st to vote for Clackamas County.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yep, I will move that Chair Smith sit on the AOC FTL Subcommittee for the Association of Oregon Counties.
Second, as long as she wants it.
Sure.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
A motion is made by Commissioner Schrader to appoint me to the AOC Federal Land Management Subcommittee, seconded by Commissioner Fisher. The reason why this is here is there was evidently a mix-up in getting the application put forward in a more timely manner. That's why we're observing it at the business meeting. The letter has to be in on Monday, and this is our last business opportunity to do that. Do Commissioners have any questions on this or comments? Hearing none. Gary, do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Shannon, please call the poll for my appointment. Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your confidence in me to represent Clackamas County in the Federal Land Management Subcommittee. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you. So with your permission, Emily is just going to write a letter, signed by Chair Smith, with just the vote you just made. We don't have time to bring the letter back to you, but do you allow us to write a letter affirming this vote? Is that okay, Commissioners? Very good. And then for my good news, I have just one item to share with you today, and we already had two public hearings on the Housing Authority, and this is related to the Housing Authority as well. Our Housing Authority of Clackamas County teamed up with the other Portland Metro Region public housing authorities to fight back against the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, who is proposing fair market rents, which is the amount that HUD funds to local housing authorities and allows us of how much rental assistance we can approve to those in our public housing units. HUD, believe it or not, was going to lower that amount from fiscal year 2021 to 2022, actually lower the amount of fair market rents. Our staff and those of other public housing authorities said no, and fought back, and won. And HUD agreed to actually raise the rents for fiscal year 2022 by approximately $300 per unit. Efficiencies, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom. So that's a huge win, so I'm very proud of our staff and the other local housing authorities who told the federal government, "No way." And they won, and we won. So it's good news I'd like to share today. That's my update, Commissioners.
That's great. Man, you take on City Hall and you win. I love stories like that. We're going to move on to Commissioner Communication. First, Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I... Gary, I should have talked to you about this beforehand, but I'm hoping that on Tuesdays, if we have enough time and issues, we can bring up and just share with the board. Doesn't need to be a lot of time. But Reimagine Oregon, Commissioner Scholl and I have a meeting on Friday of next week, and I really think it's important that our board has a chance to look at the different initiatives that we've been working on in regards to behavioral health, maternal-child health, fair housing, housing and homelessness, our community advisory boards, impact statements. I mean, the list goes on and on as to what initiatives our county is engaged in through the Reimagine Oregon. It's important that we are all versed on this because there is a narrative out there that Reimagine Oregon has been primarily focused on divesting or defunding police. And Clackamas County has been the voice at the table since the beginning that has said, "We will not divest in law enforcement." In fact, we are investing in law enforcement, which is evidenced from our public safety levy that we pursued, and many members of this board actually campaigned for. But the initiatives that came out of the Reimagine Oregon, which are things that we are all so engaged in, are worth highlighting and frame that it is not one Commissioner or two Commissioners. It's not Commissioner Scholl, it's not just myself. It's the board that has authorized this. So just revisiting it before Commissioner Scholl steps into the room where it happens will be good so we can all solidify around these initiatives and clarify to reimagine. So if that works with an hard Tuesday.
I will add it, Chair, for sure.
Chair Smith, if that's good.
Would you like a comment from me?
Yeah.
I don't think this board has ever authorized, since I've been Chair, anything from Reimagine Oregon. Now, you alluded to that statement. I would need to read and understand all the initiatives that you propose. There is a narrative out there, and it's on the website, that this organization wants to defund police. In all good conscience, I don't see how I can support an organization that makes that statement regardless of the other good they're doing. So I think, Commissioner Fisher, you might have some hard lifting to do next Tuesday.
Yeah, Chair Smith, we are participating jurisdiction. It's not a matter of supporting any organization.
Well, yeah, I tend to disagree with that very much, Commissioner, on this. Reimagine Oregon has come out and with a defund police statement that, as far as I know, is still on their website. Unless they want to remove that, recant the statement, that they fully support all jurisdictions in their support of fully funding police, I might consider it, but I don't think we should debate that now. But like you, I have given you a bar, which I think needs to be established before we send any support of approval to an organization outside our county boundaries. Thank you. Any other statements?
I appreciate the dialogue, and it is important that the board look at all the really good initiatives that are on the... Which is really what it's about. And it's not the divesting from police. We've been very vocal about that not being a Clackamas County priority. So I appreciate that. Thank you. You too.
Commissioner Scholl?
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. I would like to share some topics with you this morning that need citizen involvement. On forestry, the Oregon Department of Forestry wants your input on their FY '23 plan for timber harvest, reforestation, and trail improvement. You can make comments today through May 5th. And you can comment on the ODF website, or you can send them a letter down to the ODF Public Affairs in Salem. Remember, forests are our number-one natural resource in this state. If they're not managed properly, every citizen suffers. If they're managed properly, every citizen in this state will benefit from it. On the fentanyl scourge, we recently lost two more teenagers in Multnomah County to fentanyl overdose. The Oregon City School Board approved naloxone or Narcan in its schools. People, this tells you how close this killer drug is to our children in our schools. I believe the combination of the passage of Measure 110 and even more porous border since January of 2021 has resulted in a flood of these killer drugs creeping closer to our kids. Educate your children today. Please make sure you watch our Clackamas County Sheriff's Office video, "No Second Chances: Brandon's Story." You can find it on their website. And also, parents and children, you need to know that there are fake, look-alike pills out there that are actually killer fentanyl. If the pill does not come from your mom, or your dad, or your doctor, do not touch it. On Law &amp; Order, 24/7/365. Portland suspended... And this is a lesson to be learned. Portland suspended Law &amp; Order in 2020 and 2021. What did they get? Last year, they got 90 murders. Last week, they got 29 shootings. Portland is now on track to have 1,500 shootings this year, if it keeps up the way it is. Clackamas County has observed this. Clackamas County has observed this and has learned what the importance of 24/7/365 law and order is. And I ask every citizen, when you see a city policeman, a deputy sheriff, or somebody that works for our district attorney's office, take a moment and say "thank you." On the home mortgage interest, this relates to the cost of housing in Clackamas County. Recently, the Secretary of State issued a report criticizing the mortgage interest deduction as something that taxpayers don't need. In every major legislative session in this state, there's a representative who drafts a bill to get rid of the mortgage interest deduction, and we all must fight it every time. Our housing costs are through the roof, and this, eliminating this mortgage interest deduction just makes housing more expensive and more difficult for our young people to afford, and more difficult for our older people who already have mortgages to stay in their homes. If anything needs to be done in this state, it's to cut back on government spending, not on what stays in your wallet. Get ahead of this, contact your state rep, let them know how you feel on it. On voting, May is the primary. We have a record in this state of poor turnout for the primary, and please make sure that you've registered, you have till the 26th of April to do so, and take part in this primary. On the Clackamas County economy, Oregon, despite Oregon's exports soaring to a 90% increase last year to a total of $30 billion, we in Clackamas County need to improve our ability to attract businesses, business like Intel. The chip industry in this state last year was one of our biggest exporters. But due to restrictive Oregon land use laws, we're limited in what we can offer business in terms of commercial lands. And an example to that is, in the last couple of months, Intel took their $100 billion and went to Ohio, where they did find commercial lands that they could use for their new production facilities. Those should have come here to Clackamas County. So I ask every citizen in the county, contact your state rep, get them turned on about the importance of changing restrictive Oregon land use laws. On the Willamette Falls Restoration Project, the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Rhond decided not to participate in the Willamette Falls Legalese Project. Now they're going to take on the project on their own for the 23-acre Blue Heron site at the Willamette Falls. Their work in the coming months will focus on completing a master plan for the site, continuing environmental remediation, and launching a fundraising plan for the site. And we all look forward to seeing this beautiful place restored by the people of the Grand Rhond for all people to enjoy. And look for more information in the coming weeks on how you can help Cheryl Kennedy, tribal chairwoman, and the people of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Rhond with this visionary project. On the quote of the week, "If you have no will to change it, you have no right to criticize it." Mark Twain. On history, yesterday, 23 March, 216 years ago in 1806, explorers Meriwether Lewis and William Clark began their return to St. Louis, Missouri. 216 years ago today, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, they reached the Cathlama Village across the river, where they purchased elk meat, a dog in a hat. You gotta look good when you go across the country. They made 15 miles that day. Think about that, what this place was 216 years ago and what it is today, what progress we've made in some ways. And I hope all you kids out there are enjoying spring break. Have fun, keep smiling. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Yeah, well, I just have to, I just have to comment. There's a theme there, I think. I heard when I was listening to both Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Shoal, as it relates to reimagine, for example, I think when they first got going, you know, they had message to us that, you know, they wanted all the agencies to come together, jurisdictions, for a couple, three meetings, and their work would be done. So I did attend the first couple of meetings, and primarily because one of the founders of this group I had met years earlier at a conference in which anti-displacement policies were going to be discussed, and I was highly interested in that. Some of you know my interest in that. And what that really is, is how actions of government result in people being displaced and becoming homeless or economically displaced, and a downward spiral in their incomes. There's nothing like having your home lost and trying to piece things back together and finding a place to rent, and so on. So it just, it's just a downward spiral for a lot of people of low income. So I've been interested in that because I foresaw years and years ago that the homeless crisis would be what it is today, but not as bad as it is today. So frankly, I didn't think it, I didn't predict it to be this bad, but it is. And so, you know, reimagine, for example, didn't want to pursue that. I put it on the list of things that I was interested in. They didn't want to prioritize that, and so on. So anyhow, as I was listening to Commissioner Shoal speak about Mark Twain's quote, and also about, you know, fentanyl and all this, and Measure 110, you know, it seems like a lot of the changes, or a lot of the actions of government have actually resulted in some of our problems we have today.
That's true.
Which is, I think, the irony, right? So, you know, never before in my 12 years here, in my 21, 22 years of public service as a volunteer and others, have I ever really been so concerned about the legislative changes that are really not thoughtful, and really not really consider the consequences. And here we are today, and what do we have to show for it? We have crisis to show for it. I don't see remedies. I just see these ideas, and suddenly they become law, and then suddenly we're coping with them. And we're going to be coping with them next week, when we talk about HP 2001, our next steps. What we said last year with the letter we sent to LCDC, DLCD, with regards to that governor action with that. So, you know, a number of governments are pretty upset about that as well. So it's just, we're responding, we're taking up all of our resources, we're responding to laws that have enacted, whether 110 was based on a citizen-led measure, but nonetheless, laws have been enacted for one reason or another, that we are, we're expending so much of our time and resources, and there's more negative consequences that I see than there are positive.
I would agree with that.
Like never before. This is unprecedented. I, you know, there are a lot of smart people that have careers in education and land use planning and so forth, and it's been very thoughtful. Last evening, I was listening to the Oak Grove Community Council Chair speak about, you know, the land use matters that the planning commission will be hearing Monday night on HP 2001. And it strikes me that really, we are, again, not really contemplating and understanding what land use planning education is really all about, and what buffers are, and why zoning is placed where it is. And we somehow abandoned that, and somehow we're now going to be just changing things and throwing that all out the window, which is a crying shame. And, you know, we look to, as Commissioner Shoal's point about the, I would say, the chaos and the danger in Portland, in Oldham County, that's, that's just, it's on the news every evening. It's a shame that people are scared, but not only that, it's like daily, we're hearing about businesses closing because their customers are not walking in the door any longer, or their expenses are so darn high that they can't make it. It's not safe. They can't keep on replacing the broken windows and the doors and the vandalism. It's just caught up with them. That's not what we want here in Clackamas County, frankly. And I'm just afraid that that's going to be a very, our challenge is not fighting the problem, it's fighting, it's going to be responding to this legislation that's been forced upon us. That's the irony here. Governor, government essentially is making it worse. Anyhow, on a better note, on a higher note, and I hope it is a higher note, and Chair, I would really, really ask for your thoughtful consideration of where we are and what happened. But there was one voice with Concord, the project, and it all went somewhat sideways and awry when we got some information that turned out to be not so accurate in November. And I think that has caused the community to have and make, or have thoughts and make decisions that were based on some information that was not quite accurate. So I'm not going to blame them, but I think that until they have the facts, and I believe they deserve the facts, to know that the funding for both the library and the funding for NCPRD is just as sound as it was the day that we had it. Granted, I think escalation in prices have impacted both, and maybe there's a way we can phase the NCPRD element, that's the most expensive one, but there's a way to get there.
Okay.
And I would not, I would not really look at it as confusion. I just think that the folks that are really, I won't say diverging from the original plan, are doing so because they, they're not, they don't have the confidence that the resources are there, and there's a way to get there. And I think, you know, Gary and I have had this conversation, and I'm hoping that we can demonstrate that frankly, we can get there from here. It's not impossible, and we don't have to take some of these more drastic, I'd say drastic actions, but, you know, they're, they could add a lot of cost if we don't really kind of go back to the plan the community came up with. So there was one voice. Separating the library is not as big of a deal. Financially, I support what the community comes up with. I think that's a minor change, it's about how we do it. But I just, just want to ask that my colleagues Wednesday night just approach it with an open mind, understand what happened, and be considerate. So, and I ask that of also the people that have spent hours and weeks and years on this project. I thank all of, everyone who came here today, everyone on the phone, going to all these meetings. They really are trying, and they were, they were conveyed to them that the resources were there, or the financing plan was there, and it is there. It's always been there, except it just hasn't been apparent. So I will conclude my comments there.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, good, good morning, almost afternoon, Clackamas County. Glad to be here today. I wanted to give a mini-report on things that we've been working on at the national level at this point. I had an opportunity to chair the Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee at the National Associations of Counties, and I'd like to make folks aware at, as we were working through that, can't hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay. Basically, some of the policies that we have put forward and were largely unanimously adopted by colleagues. The first one was increasing African-American homeownership issues. And the National Association of Counties, at this point in time, supports increased federal support to address the decreasing rates of African-American homeownership. To increase the rates of African-American homeownership requires intentional actions by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to increase access to resources and support and facilitate the home-buying process for African-Americans. So this was specifically for our African-American community. Well, I will assert that, well, it will apply to all of our communities across the board as we really try to move people, or help people move up an economic ladder, and really strive towards homeownership. The second one, I'm very happy to say, will be very, will delight our arts community. We encourage the U.S. Congress to enact the Creative Economy Revitalization Act. The National Association of Counties urges the U.S. Congress to enact the Creative Economy Revitalization Act to require the U.S. Department of Labor in consultation with the National Endowment for the Arts. I particularly like this because it was breaking down barriers between two organizations. To award competitive grants to government and nonprofit agencies, which will assist eligible entities to carry out arts and creative workforce programs that result in publicly accessible art and arts programming and employ individuals. And we actually have done that for many years here on this county. As you notice, as you come into our foyer, there is artwork displayed that is a result of our Arts Alliance. And as you really go around the campus as well, intentionally, when this campus was built, we included our artists and our art community in order to really have the area be a beautiful space with art. And you can take a look at today what we have out here in our beautiful circle of honor, is what the artwork is there. And again, not only our foyer here in the Public Services building, if you look in the Development Services building as well, you always see displays of art, and actually historic artifacts, because we also work with our local museums and our Oregon history folks with this. Okay, the other one is, we, the proposed interim resolution in support of demonstration state status. So, the National Association of Counties urges the U.S. Department of Labor to regain the current regulations within the Wagner-Pizer Program status as a demonstration state, and allow local workforce areas to continue setting the standard for innovation and excellence in workforce delivery. This is about local control, and we're bringing it up to the national level. NACO urges the U.S. Congress to support maintaining the status through standalone legislation, or within any Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act reauthorization legislation. So that is a key element of what our workforce, you know, platform is going to be, and it does include empowering our local workforce boards here at the state level. So that was a pretty important one. The other one is, we do this one every year, because it is so important to us, and we heard about the Housing and Urban Development work that we do today, is one of the primary things that we started with this morning in this county. So, the appropriations for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the National Association of Counties urges the U.S. Congress to support the following levels of funding for core U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development programs in the fiscal year 2023, Transportation, Housing and Urban Development and Related Agencies Appropriations Bill. No less than $4.2 billion in community development block grant formula funding, no less than $1.9 billion in formula funding for the Home Investment Partnerships Program, $3.5 billion for homeless housing assistance grants, including at least 20% of funds directed to ESG as allowed by statute, plus an amount to fully fund expiring supportive housing and shelter plus care rent subsidy contracts. Expansion of the Section 8 voucher program, in addition to, excuse me, in addition to full funding for existing Section 8 project-based and tenant-based contracts, $40 million for HUD Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, and $500 million in Section 108 Loan Guarantee Authority. What a list. What that means is that we are supporting the agency that is one of the primary funders that we have at the local level for housing across the continuum, not only for families, not only for ownership, but also in particular for veterans. In regard to our veterans, I'm going to remind people to go to the Oregon Department Veterans Site, the ODVA. They are celebrating Women in the Military Week. I don't know if you've seen that, Commissioner Shoal. And it's a great program, and essentially what they are doing is having women veterans talk about their stories, about how they've served their country, why they joined the military, and how proud they are with their counterparts, counterparts to be a part of the veterans' community here, not only in Oregon, but across the nation. It is pretty remarkable. So take a look at that website and get a look at all of their accomplishments and expectations there. Finally, I'm going to shunt this one to Commissioner, actually to Chair Smith. Yesterday, we all went to the Oregon Business Alliance, I think it was the Oregon City Business Alliance, where we listened to, let's see, one of the state economists on prosperity and the workforce, and what is going on with the tight labor market. So Commissioner, I thought you might want to run with that one a little bit, so.
I can, and please, commissioners, I think we all were in attendance, so maybe you can help me with some facts on that. Thank you for your comments on all these NACO updates, and I think it's really important, since you're a member of NACO, that you bring back facts and information at our local level and let people know, because you travel and you're a part of- and let people know, because you travel and you're a part of the, uh, national effort on this. So I, I don't ever tire of hearing of what, of what they're doing and what you're doing.
This is pretty important stuff, and I might add, thank you, Chair Smith, that. Um, I do think that I'm going to look at Gary here. You know, if we can take a look at some of these committees that were on and in line, our own federal, uh, you know, policies, uh, and our lobbying to support these, these kind of generalized things, that would be great.
Okay. Yeah, just bring that forward. Okay. Well, we did attend the Oregon City Business Association luncheon this week, and the topic, uh, we had a state economist come in from band, and he, he broke out for, uh, some data on specific jurisdictions in Oregon and how we're performing and how we're not performing. There were several little quick takeaways. Inflation is here to stay for a while. I think they're thinking it'll top out at 6%. And he also talks about, because of his education and background, the psychological effects of inflation and how much inflation rate people will accept. And he says, people will kind of normally accept an inflation rate of 6%, but if you go any higher, hmm, you're going to see, uh, some changes in behaviors and spending patterns. Uh, I also know that the federal government has readjusted its calculations on exactly what our overall inflation rate is, and they have dumbed it down for us. And so, remember the high inflation rates of the 1980s? Oh, I do very much, because I was self-employed at the time. They reached as high as 18% and interest rates were also that high. And I have some people in the audience shaking their head. Thank you. And I know many people here on this board experienced that as well. So when we look at a 6% inflation rate here, we see how that's accelerating. The top three drivers of the inflation rate is fuel and energy, transportation, and durable goods. No surprise there. One surprise to me was how housing is not motivating our high inflation rate. And we all think it is because the houses are so high. Well, he made the statement in that, if you help me if I'm right, most people, their houses have gone up, but they're still living in their houses, and most people have not sold their houses. So that is not a contributor to the inflation. He talked about interest rates will be rising this year, and their, interest rate is about 4.5% to buy a home, and every time the interest rate goes up, it puts people's affordability index out the window. We know that. Uh, another, uh, point was, I think Clackamas County may be faring better than our neighbors in the region on our unemployment rate is below 2% right now. You take a look at Monloma County and Washington County, uh, we're doing a little bit better. And the one, one wonderful takeaway was the labor market. And at Clackamas County, we're experiencing shortage of labor in some of our positions, and we have, have job applications out there. And he seems to think within about three months, the labor shortage issue will right itself, and people will be coming back in, uh, to the labor markets. He says, some of the people who are not counted right now are the people who are self-employed because they left their jobs for various reasons, have become contractors, private contractors, self-employed. He thinks that they will be entering back into our labor market. So in some respects, there's good news on the horizon, but higher interest rates, they'll be adjusted many times this year, and inflation is here to stay. So everybody, including our, our county budgets and Concord Park, I'm going to add on this, we're going to have to figure out how to maneuver through all that. The, uh, mayor's and chair meeting was a lot of fun this month. Um, we had mayors from all over Clackamas County participate, and we had a briefing, briefing from our Cracks All-Star staff who represent housing and social services on what's available to these cities, the population in these cities, because we have a shared constituency. Just because we have cities with a boundary line does not mean these situations stop. So what the staff did, and I'm so thrilled about, they developed a Clackamas County Pocket Resource Guide. And, um, this is available. It's in several languages, and just a quick call. And so this has been given to the mayors and their staff, um, to, um, if you need help. And there's a main phone number on here, a general information and referral phone number, 211. 211, like our 911, if you need information on housing, food, clothing, healthcare, and more. Also, there are probably 25 different phone numbers listed here, from everything from alcohol and drug helpline, suicide, energy assistance, social services, veterans, housing, resolution. There's state of Oregon numbers, there's some legal aid numbers, uh, women, infants, and children, Social Security, Medicare. Even those aren't county services. We have information on here, the flip side is Spanish. You can go online and get other languages as well. I'm very, very excited about this. Uh, we, you can obtain this card at www.clackamas.us and print down, print out a copy for yourself. It's just great, great information. Um, I will reiterate again, we have, and this is not the place for the debate. Like I say, we're having a meeting next week. And I'm going to quote an old-time statement, "Hey, just show me the money. That's all you folks have to do is show Tootie the money." With that in mind, I want to thank all people for participating today, and this meeting is adjourned.